Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our board meeting. I'd like to open the board meeting with the pledge to the flag.
United States of America, or we should say.
Okay, and now I would like to turn the meeting over to our district clerk for the oath of office.
Freddie Amanda. I, Robert Crabtree, do solemnly swear that I would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board member of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District to the best of my ability.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. Second, Josh, all in favor?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Michael Merzio as president of the North Syracuse Board of Education.
Favor?
And I would like to make a motion to nominate Paul Farfalia as vice president of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education.
Okay. Very much. Hi, Michael Merzio. I have a motion for number four, for the approval of the audit committee. Mark, second from Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next one, I'd like to group number 5.01 through six together as a group. Do I have a motion for that? Xavier, second from Beth, any questions or comments?
EBD about appointment of district health safety committee. It's going to be the director of science, technology, education, and art. We don't have that. They're going to be the director of STEM? As director of science, technology, education, and art. Never had this word.
But we'll change that item after we approve the.
Academy of Art? Okay, I apologize then. I apologize. You never know what they all have.
Which item are we talking about? I'm still looking for it.
Five.
Which is that?
Five, two, one, and it's just, I apologize because I didn't know who it was.
So I did want to just make a reference to that though, because on there they also reference a board of education rep to be determined.
Oh, yeah.
And I may have been the last. I served as, on that committee as president. I don't know who served the past year. I was not, I did not go because I wasn't an officer anymore. Maybe I should have, but, so I'm throwing that out there saying that anybody who's interested in that might want to talk to Mike. Or if you need one of the officers to do it, I can do that again. So usually meets, it's a brief meeting, meets eight o'clock in the morning, three to four times a year. So, thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous? In 5.27, the approved the Town of Cicero's SPOs. Do I have a motion for that? Xavier, second from Mandy, any questions or comments? All those in favor? And I will abstain. I will group 601 through 603 together. Do I have a motion for those? Josh, second from Beth, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. 701 through 709 together. Do I have any questions on those items? Do I have a motion? Beth, second from Mark, all those in favor? Unanimous? And 801 is the readoption of all the board of education policies. Do I have a motion to approve that item? Josh, second from Mark, any questions or comments? Favor? That is unanimous. I have a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting. Josh, second from Bob, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Formal meeting here. I have to call the meeting to order. So we'll be starting our regular board of education meeting for July 7th at 5:16. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Dolores Sleeth, a graduate and retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Ronald McGay, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Have no presentations this evening. Comments from the audience? Welcome, whoever would like to come up first. Sorry, and Jill went over the rules three minutes in the hall.
Hello.
My name is Fadi, and this is Jacqueline. I'm the parents of Lucas Kabaz. Want to apologize for the attire to him. Want to go over an audit. Not just about our child, it's about an ongoing system.
Thank you. Education Committee reports. Mr. Thorne, do we have anything for policy?
Our legislative meeting, if I become the chair, once again, it will be October 1st. And the item that we're going to work on is registration of students. We're going to bring in somebody from the Board of Elections. That's where our first OC and BOCs will be meeting for our reorganization meeting on Thursday. There are some events coming up. I want to thank the North Syracuse Central School District for hosting on the 7th of August, our nursing graduation at Roxborough Road Middle School. On August 12th will be our adult education graduation at North Syracuse Junior High School. And I gave you information, if you're interested, on the golf tournament on August 13th, 2025. If you're interested in that. And I told Jill I will not have a report. I put the July and August report together. That's the end of my report.
Dr. Ward.
Just two things that I wanted to note since our last board meeting. The first one has to do with graduation. I just, it was my first time doing a CNS graduation, and it was just a great day. And just kudos to the graduates and the families, and kudos to Xavier for his speech and everyone who had a part in it. So it was, it was an awesome event. And then secondly, I just want to remind folks, we did have our utilization study kickoff meeting last Monday or whenever it was. The part that I want the public to know and to pay attention to is right on our website, there's a banner that's called utilization study. And on that banner, you click on that banner, and it takes you to all of the agendas of the meetings. It takes you to the presentations of the meetings and when the meetings are. So the meetings are open to the public. You can sit in and watch and observe. But, but that's something that's on the website, and it does change every month because there's more and more added each month. So I just wanted to point that out to folks to, to go ahead and click on that button, and you can get caught up pretty quick on how the utilization study is going. Thank you.
Any comments?
Just, just one, since we have policies, and there today is, there's a reference to board continuing education or conference travel. So I mention this once a year, maybe twice, maybe three times. But there are, the New York State School Boards Association does offer some conferences and education workshops. Bob and I will be attending one, I believe, August 1st and 2nd. So it'll be right after next board meeting. And just a heads up, in October, they will be having their. Up for that, I think registration for that other, for the summer thing is probably closed now, but I. I don't want to put the burden on you, but if somebody's in, I mean, when it's interested, they can talk to you. You can check and see about availability. Very good program. We're going to sit down and divvy up what workshops we go to, and we'll bring you back a little bit of it. Try and cut it down to what we used to call the Cliff Notes version, which you young folk wouldn't know. It's before Google. Okay. Remember Cliff Notes? Okay, well, thank you.
Before I pass it over to our new student. And we're excited to have you and look forward to working. Not to throw you on the spot, but if you've got anything, time is yours.
Hi, I'm Bridget. The only thing that I have to present tonight is the student opinion since the release of the new cellphone policy on parent square. A lot of kids, way more than I thought, that was their first knowledge of the policy and what we're doing. A lot of kids thought that it was kind of going to be similar, where they just put it in their backpack and they don't take it out. So I think it was kind of a shock to a lot of kids, and I think more than I expected. There's a lot of anxiety going into the upcoming school year about these pouches, about these whatever. I've already heard talk of what if we get an unlocking device? How durable are they? How can we break into them? There is so much anxiety surrounding these things. So I think the only thing I would say is we have to kind of prepare. I think the only thing I would say is we have to kind of prepare ourselves for next year, for a few months. It's going to be a little rough as far as behavior, mental health, anxiety with our students.
You very much. Action items. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to take A, B, and C together as a group. Do I have a motion for that? Paul, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's you. And marketable and non-marketable surplus. Do I have a motion to accept that as submitted? Mark? Paul, any questions or comments? Hold off until the next meeting.
Yeah, they, they call them activity books, and that they might be consumable, but I think it's an easy thing to find out.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to table, uh, item D, mark them on marketable surplus until the next board meeting. Do I have a second for that? All those in favor? All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to come out of the executive session. Do I have a second Xavier? All those in favor? That's question action items. Item A resolution to approve the transportation and food service substitute hourly pay rates. Do I have a motion to approve that as submitted? Josh and Xavier, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Approve resolution to create and abolish specific positions for administrative title changes. Do I have a motion to approve those? Paul and Mark, any questions or comments? Approve an MOA between the North Syracuse Central School District and the NSTA and LPNs unit. Do I have a motion to approve that MOA? Xavier and Josh, any questions or comment? He approved the creation of a 1.0 FTE teaching assistant at Allen Road Elementary. Do I have a motion to approve that as submitted? Josh and Beth, any questions or comments? All those in favor? He approved the MOA between the North Syracuse Central School District and the NSADA. Do I have a motion to approve that MOA as submitted? Josh and Mandy, any questions or comments? All those opposed?
Opposed.
F, approve the MOA between the North Syracuse Central School District and the NSADA and SEA. Do I have a motion to approve that MOA as submitted? Josh and Beth, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed. Approve the amended 2526 district calendar. Do I have a motion to? Prove the amended 2526 payroll schedule. Do I have a motion to approve that as submitted? Paul and Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Duration of an annual contract award for the automotive supplies bid reference number 2025-08. Do I have a motion to approve those? All those in favor? Prove the resolution for the annual reauthorization of the RIC one risk operations center precipitation for the 2526 school year. Do I have a motion for that? Mark and Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That you have a gift this evening. An anonymous donation of art supplies was received by the North Syracuse Central School District with an estimated value of $350. The donations include canvases and box and wall frames. I have a motion to accept with gratitude those gifts.
Doodle sheets.
I have a motion, Mandy and Mark, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Well, this is a new policy. I put both policies together. One is for the maximum temperature for school buildings and the use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. Do I have a motion to approve these? Mark, second from Beth, any questions or? You a comment?
Oh, cool. I just wanted to applaud the fact that New York State is, you know, taking some measures to help our kids between the fact that we're going to be baking our schools safer by having the maximum temperatures, but then also making sure that the schools, students don't have electronic devices during the day. There's going to be a lot of work to be done, but I think it's an important step in the right direction, and I'm looking forward to the fact that we're following this to make sure we're keeping our kids safe.
I also have a comment. Just, I want to go off of what Josh said and thank the state and specifically the state legislators and the advocates behind this bill. When I was up doing my job up in Albany, there was an awesome display. They had, they called it a heat tank, and they put a math, they gave one of the old school math tests and cranked the temperature from anywhere, started at like 80 and got all the way up to 100 and challenged the legislators to go in the heat tank and do the math problems while the heat rose. And I think that really got the point across on how hard it is to focus when it's really hot. I mean, I remember the days of Gillette when we, they had to put water in the hallway for us to go get when it was scolding hot in the classrooms. I can't tell you what we were learning, but I could tell you it was hot and all I wanted was a drink of water. So again, I applaud the state, I applaud our district and all the advocates behind this to get this done. Thank you.
Just, just on the cell phone piece, because your comments today, I appreciated. A group of us went to a workshop, God, it was a few months ago in February, because I shared the concerns about it seemed extreme to go bell to bell as opposed to little pocket pouches for classrooms or whatever, but I know I saw a lot of real compelling data and that's out there and some school districts kind of did it ahead of time. I know Sko Harry was one of them. And again, what you said basically is what they, they had a rough entry into this, a rough couple of months, but it kind of subsided pretty quickly after that, and it seems that all of a sudden they were watching students speak to each other at cafeteria. I think it'll be a rough patch. I'm hoping we'll get through it and everything will be much nicer on the other side. It's just, you know, in a perfect world, but I know there are some other school districts that did this ahead of time also locally, but I guess we'll see, but it's law now, so.
And just one other note too, the building principals are putting out some more detail as well. Like, I just couldn't put every bit of detail in that letter that I wrote, so there's a, there's variations between, you know, all buildings, but the principals will be putting out more information, so.
I have one other comment on the cell phone policy, and it's kind of expanded to your point. It's unfortunate to hear that the students felt like this was sprung upon them. Obviously, us as, as you know, not in high school and adults, we were kind of more in tune with what's going on, especially like myself and Josh, who worked in the state legislature. We've been hearing about this for over a year now, and so I really hope this is kind of a, maybe this is encouraging to especially like our seniors and our older students to start maybe looking into what's coming down the pipeline in education policy, especially in New York State, because this is kind of a wake-up call to show that the stuff that I do and my boss does up in Albany really does matter and it does affect everyday people. And I think this is a really good example of that, so I feel for them because, you know, I would hate for my phone be taken away for eight hours a day, but I really do think as Paul said, that you're going to see some beautiful interactions that hasn't been seen since he was in school, so. Thank you.
All in favor? A couple of retirements to note this evening. Chuck Banks, a physical education teacher is retiring with 38 years of service. Nita Bellucci, a family and consumer science teacher is retiring with 37 years of service. Catherine Carr, a social studies teacher is retiring with 20 years of service. Hildy Augustine, social studies teacher is retiring with 27 years of service. Aaron Deesburrito, a reading teacher is retiring with 18.4 years of service. Matt Heinrich, a social studies teacher is retiring with 31 years of service. Mike McCaffrey, elementary teacher is retiring with 31 years of service. Suzanne Stevenson, a music teacher is retiring with 30 years of service. Kathleen Sullivan, English teacher is retiring with 33 years of service. June Chamberlain, a school nurse is retiring with 15.7 years of service. Robert Solanger, a bus driver is retiring with 11 years of service. And David London, the director on special assignment is retiring with 30.5 years of service. So as always, we wish everyone a long happy. Personnel A, do I have a motion to approve personnel A as submitted? F and Paul, any questions or comments?
I didn't ask this question. In the contract, each person needs to give six months notice in order to receive the stipend. These people did not. That any precedent for any?
Those in favor? Report staff personnel report, do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth and Mark, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed. And administrative personnel report C, do I have a motion to place that before us? Questions or comments on this? All those in favor? Oppose. Now I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Josh, all those in favor? You.